Do I have a motion to open the October 26, 2022 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a teacher, student, and contractual matters to discuss. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the Wednesday, October 26, 2022 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call? Here.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one set of minutes from the October 12, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if there is any member of the public that would like to address the board, they may do so by approaching the podium, and please state your first and last name.
My name is Dahlia Flanagan, and I haven't been to one of these meetings before, so I'm not sure of any other protocols. But I'm interested in seeing about starting a committee that could be district-wide. So I thought that perhaps this was a place to ask about that or to see what the process is for approval. So I was thinking that it would be great if the district had something that was a little bit more for like, normally it's diversity and inclusion, but I think for kids, it could be completely like made super easier and more like cartoon. But I think that there's a little bit of a pocket that that doesn't exist here, and there's a lot of people in this community who could really look towards something like that. And also, there's so much, the community is still growing still, and we expect to see a lot more people coming in as well. And I would imagine those students and families are going to be, continue to be diverse. And yeah, so I thought I would come down today. I saw it on the website, and I thought, let me check out the meeting and kind of bring that to your attention and see how something like that could get put together. I, as a parent, am available, and yeah, that's basically what I'm here to talk about and hear about.
Thank you. Yes, and just so you understand protocols, I'm going to go ahead and give a president's update, and then when the superintendent gives his update, he'll respond at that time.
Cool.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
So we have a lot of exciting news to share. Starting off with the Harrison High School debate team. The debate team captain, senior Jesse Pine, placed second and was named fourth speaker at Bronx Science High School's national championship. Debate team member Jack Borman also posted an impressive finish, placing in the top 30 debaters and being named 12th speaker. Jesse Pine currently is ranked number one for the Lincoln Douglas debater nationally, and this is actually the sixth time that a Harrison debater has been ranked number one in the nation. It's remarkable.
It is absolutely remarkable.
It's remarkable. Jesse Pine and Thomas Berg were named National Speech and Debate Association's Academic And just to give a little stat, fewer than 1% of the student members of the association earn this award that recognizes academic rigor, competitive speech and debate success, and personal excellence. So congratulations to that. The following Harrison High School seniors earned recognition by the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. Semi-finalist Ariella Blackman, commended students, the following Jonathan Choi, Jack Eif, Nicholas Hardy, Demetrius Mametris. Mametius, sorry if I'm butchering that name.
They're hard names.
Tricky names. The Marine Band flutist, we had the Gunnery Sergeant Heather Zenobia, a flutist in the United States, President's own Marine Band, visited the high school for their concert. Gunnery Sergeant Zenobia shared warm-up techniques, exercises, and strategies, and discussed her journey as a musician, specifically her day-to-day life as a musician in an elite military band. And students just had an exceptional opportunity working with her, and they described it as inspiring and unforgettable. In honor of Italian Heritage and Culture Month, four Harrison Central School District students were awarded certificates by the Westchester Coalition of Italian-American Organizations. Students were chosen for the award based on merit in Italian class and interested in Italian culture. The students recognized were eighth graders Nicholas Palicio, the teacher Christina Palma, and Michael Robert Rodosta, teacher Aurora Russo, as well as 10th grader Christina Zumbo, and her teacher was Dana Jacobowski, and 12th grader Mia Paparatti and the teacher Christina Distacchio. And in addition to her award, Mia Paparatti received a scholarship sponsored by Ace &amp; Dico. So congratulations to all in recognition of Italian Heritage Culture Month. To commemorate Fire Safety Month, the West Harrison Fire Department made their annual visit to Preston Elementary School with students in grades key through five to teach them about fire safety. Firefighters brought fire trucks and equipment, as well as a mobile firehouse, which is always fun for the kids. We had our annual HEP fundraiser, which I was in attendance of. It was a wonderful night, so much great energy in the room, people celebrating. We had about 150 parents and friends attended this year, and it was held at Harrison Meadows Country Club despite the crazy rainstorm that night. It was very well attended. The HEP awards grants to support districts program, including 3D printers, a robotics program, other tech ed programs, college tours, an e-library, and the fitness center at Harrison High School. So thank you again to the Harrison Education Foundation for all that you do to support our district. Moving on to athletics, the football, the Harrison Huskies won their final game at Fox Lane of the regular season, 59-0. And with that win, the Huskies finished with an excellent record of 7-1 and are co-league champs this year. So for the fourth straight week, a Husky football player was nominated for the honor of Low-Hud Player of the Week, and this week, the player was Marco Citro. Again, congratulations. This has been a very exciting football season for our Huskies. I also want to give a big congratulations to Coach Jay Sorocco. Coach was named this week's Lou Rotino High School Football Coach of the Week. The Lou Rotino High School Football Coach is part of the Giants' continuing effort to support local high school football programs. And the Giants selected the name, the award in memory of former Union High School in New Jersey, Coach Lou Rotino, and his fine commitment to the game of football, his community, the betterment of athletes' lives. So each week during the high school football season, the Giants select one area of the high school head coach and coach of the week winner. So this is a wonderful accomplishment for Coach Sorocco, and we are very proud that he is promoting youth football, developing motivated student athletes, and contributing overall to our community. So congratulations. Volleyball, the Huskies will open the first round of the Section 1 Class Playoffs Friday night at 4:30 p.m. at the high school, the number-two overall seed, and will play the winner of the Saunders and Tappan Zee. The volleyball team continues to have an excellent season, being at Eastchester last month, three to one, and the win earned them the league championship. So that is just very exciting. Leah Seibol, the Low-Hud Player of the Week, award for her excellence. So congratulations to Lily.
Yeah.
The girls soccer team opened the first round of the Section 1 Playoffs with a win over Walters-Panas, 5-2. Sophia Miller had two goals, and Kaya Ito with five saves. The Huskies advance onto the second round of the playoffs, and will play Rye on Friday at 6:00 p.m. Oh, wait, or did that happen?
I lost you.
Just kidding, that happened, and they lost.
People are asking me questions, I'm trying to answer them.
Okay, the boys soccer opened the first round of the Section 1 Playoffs with a great team win over Hendrick Hudson, 2-1. The goals were scored by Braden Sotile and Jason Viola, assisted by Franco Weisberg.
This has been a historic fall season for us athletically.
We're dominating.
We are, and we have lots of kids who have received the Low-Hud Athlete of the Week, which is incredible.
So the Huskies advance to the second round of the Section 1 Playoffs and will play Horace Greeley on Saturday at 2:00 p.m. The varsity cross-country team on Saturday, the girls cross-country placed second, and the league championship meet. Strong performances by Katrina Terrelli, Anika Terrelli, Philippa Rasmussen, and Gilmore earned an all-league accolades. Congratulations to Katrina, as she will be committing to Bucknell and competing in cross-country and track at the Division 1 level. Congratulations.
We don't have a lot of cross-country athletes that compete at Division 1. That makes Dr. Mulholland and I very happy as former cross-country coaches.
And the boys team placed third and continues to improve with several runners setting new personal records. The girls varsity swimming team finished the season undefeated in League 3 with a record of 8-0, defeating Yonkers on Friday to secure a league title. The Section 1 Swimming Championship will take place at Felix Feta Middle School on November 7th and 8th. The individual qualifiers for Harrison so far are Talia Applebaum, Mako Suzuki, and Sophia Bondikov, and also qualified for the relay events. And additional relay qualifiers include Kelly Newman and Angelina Lingesa. Harrison girls varsity swimming team went over Nyack 80-80. Congratulations to Sophia and Mako qualifying for the Section 1 Swimming Championship in November. And the girls will compete against Yonkers on Friday. With the win, the Huskies will win a league title and finish the season undefeated 9-0 in their league.
That's awesome.
This is just, it keeps coming.
It does. Krista Galano was very happy tonight.
Field hockey, the Huskies opened the first round of the Section Field Hockey Playoffs with a 2-1 win over Hendrick Hudson. They advanced to the second round and played last night. Unfortunately, they lost 4-0. Cory Sandamico was the Low-Hud Player of the Week for her excellent play. Congratulations to Cory on receiving this special award. And in the previous game, Sophia Puccio had both goals scored, so congratulations, Sophia.
An agreement.
You're not supposed to say that.
I want to add something.
Go ahead.
I rarely speak, as you know, but I have to say this, the girls played a hell of a game against Rye, and it was a very emotional ending, and it wasn't, the tears just flew. They were all over. Twenty girls that came from four different elementary schools, all different backgrounds, covered, it just covered everything, it just summed up everything. These are women that just, you know, they grew from girls to women, and you could see the love and respect that they had for one another, and it was just an emotional ending. We were all in tears. It took about a half an hour till it was all done, until, you know, we basically left when the lights were being closed out, because the girls, you know, they finally realized this was the last time they were going to see their friends and the last game, and, you know, it's.
They developed a beautiful bond over their years playing hockey.
The coaches, and you couldn't, you couldn't get a better outcome. It was a true, it was a winning season, all the way.
That's great. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing. NCAA Night on Thursday, Ms. Smalchevsky and Mr. Galano hosted the NCAA Information Night for the families of 7th through 12th grades, students considering participating in sports at the collegiate level. Mr. Jay Sorocco and Ms. Wilson, two teachers who competed in college, shared their experiences as college athletes with families. And I'll just mention, keep an eye on the district calendar as always. There's always events happening. Our fall play at the Harrison High School is on November 4th, 5th, and 6th. We have various meetings and PT Council and PTA meetings to attend, so always keep an eye on the district calendar. And with that, Dr. Wool, I'll pass the mic to you.
Thank you so much. I'm just going, there's so much to cover, I want to try to keep it relatively tight. And thank you, Mrs. Flanagan, for your question. I appreciate you coming and sharing your thinking. And I will reach out to you directly, and we'll meet so that I can better understand what you'd hope to accomplish, because I'm certainly open to listening. I do want to thank Kim and Larry, our principal and assistant principal at the high school, for being here tonight. I'm just so very proud of our high school on a regular basis, and it's not for any of the accolades you just mentioned. We are extraordinarily academically proficient and high-performing, but it is the culture of our high school that continues to impress me. I heard a story about our band, our very elite band, traveling to University of Pennsylvania, and that was a great story, and the connections that the kids made was a great story. But what happened that makes me proud is that there was a group of kids there that didn't have access to certain instruments and materials, and our kids joined with them and felt compelled to connect in a human way. And those are the unwritten stories that I see our students acting on on a regular basis. And it's, it's so evident in our high school that there is an ethic of care, and it certainly starts at the top, and both of those, and if Mrs. Griffo was here, I would say the same thing. The level of personal attention and detail that kids receive, whether it's from our coaches or our teachers, is evident everywhere. And to me, the great celebration is when you can walk into a high school and you can feel its heartbeat. And that is my proudest achievement in 20 years here, that we have a high school that is diverse economically and in every other way, racially, culturally, and yet, our kids seem to find the space to express who they are. And I just want to credit the board, because there are things that people are unaware. So this, we're in our PSAT, PACT cycle, and for those of you that are unaware, we've been working for 20 years to remove any structural barrier for any child to have access to anything. The core values of our district were adopted in my third year as superintendent, equity, access, rigor, and adaptability. But one of the real challenges for working families is that they can't afford to do some of the things that they'd like their kids to do. So we pay for all of those exams for every child. We also pay for every IB and AP exam for every child, because our philosophy is that every child should have access to what they need. The other thing that I am most proud of, and I mention this tonight because it's important to me, because I think it's why kids feel so seen and valued in our school, is that there is no prerequisite for entrance into anything other than your interest. If you're going to struggle in a math program, we're going to invite you in and help you. If you are a special education student in a very high-functioning class and require a co-teacher, we're going to provide it. So I say this tonight because we're at a pivotal point in this journey. It's something that I've been working for most of my life, but it's going to happen, I hope. We've been working tirelessly to get our final approval to become a full international baccalaureate district. I'll remind the board that I made this proposal in 1999, before I was a superintendent, because of the IB philosophy, the idea that everyone's culture should be seen, respected, and honored, not on occasion, but as an embedded part of our core curriculum. And so we're very close, Dr. Mulholland's very tired, but we're really close to final approval. Our teachers, I was in a PYP training today, are incredibly enthusiastic, rebuilding all of our units to make sure that they meet the IB standards of not only multiple perspectives, but overarching, universal themes that we return to over and over again from kindergarten to 12th grade. Again, everybody participates in the IB, everybody. You don't have to be invited in, you don't have to test your way in. Now, when you get to high school, as you know, and we're in the middle of our five, our second five-year review of our very well-received IB diploma program, and Dr. Tyler, who's not here, has done a magnificent job of making sure that access is at the center of what we do. Last year, almost 97% of our senior class participated in at least one IB or AP, and almost 90% in two. I made this announcement, but I think it's, again, worthy of repeating, because it's everybody's effort that made this happen. IB is studying us because we're the only high school that they can find that doesn't have a prerequisite for entrance, and yet, they place us in the top 2% of academic performance of IB high schools in the world. And that means we have proven something that is important to say. Everybody, given the right opportunity and the right supports, will succeed. And so I just wanted to recognize our faculty, because they're a little bit tired right now, but they're working really hard, you know, coming out of COVID, but they're in the midst of training. I think the current cohort is training for three straight days, at least, am I right? And today was day one, I was there for a little bit. And at the end of each of these trainings, IB requires every teacher be trained, but we're developing units, we're reexamining all of our core content, and we are moving towards what I want to be a completely systemic approach to ensuring our core values live, not only in word, but indeed. And I think, I just wanted to mention that tonight, because I'm getting really excited. I can't wait for this to finally happen. And if the budget allows, either this coming budget cycle, Tim's going to shake his head no, but or in the future budget cycle, we'll be bringing back a world language program at the elementary school, which will further enhance our kids' opportunities, not only in middle school, but at the exit point in high school. My goal initially, when I proposed this way back when, was to try to let kids exit middle school with two credits in foreign language, which would give them more space when they get to high school to pursue multiple languages. Right now, they're packed, they can't do it, and I asked Larry to extend the school day, he was liable to take me outside and give me a punch in the nose. So to say that, Mrs. Flanagan mentioned tonight, lots of people are moving here. We're really happy. I will say, the challenge we're going to have, when we disaggregate, and Dr. Laidwig has done a good job of talking about this, by elementary zone, some of our zones are getting flooded. Purchase School, for example, has almost 700 new units of housing, either online or proposed. That's going to bring lots of kids, and it's going to require more building space. Our high school, even though we added an extension, is already overscheduled, because so many people now move here just for our high school. And our middle school is probably the only place we can withstand a little bit more growth, but the other three elementary schools are equally out of space. And it's not an artifact, in the case of Harrison Avenue, of people building new houses. It's people moving out and coming to participate in this very thoughtfully constructed system we've created. The challenge will be, ladies and gentlemen, at some point very soon, we're going to have to talk about expanding our buildings. And if we don't do that, then I don't, I can't keep class sizes down if I don't have classrooms. And there are certain things that we want to also enhance at our high school. So we are working really hard to align all of the parts of our vision so that this school community can be really proud of not only its instructional programs and the way kids are treated, but also its facilities. It all has to fit. And so I'm in an optimistic place, but I'm also a little bit concerned. Obviously, we're in a tough economic climate. The school board has never, ever, ever asked the community to override the tax cap levy. We always live within that very narrow bandwidth, and that is an important thing to remember when you talk about development and you talk about opportunity. As more kids come, to maintain what we have, and my plan is to hopefully expand it, we need to start to think and talk about that, and we will be. Couple of other things that are hard for me to talk about, because they involve the loss of life. So I've been superintendent now, this is the start of my 21st year. I've seen lots of children killed tragically, in some cases, in accidents, in some cases, act of violence, in other cases, with dreadful illnesses. And we have shifted of tradition, and I know it's painful, but we had to think about it, because just this past year, we lost a member of our senior class. We've lost elementary school students to terrible fights with disease. And I want to make sure that the way we commemorate those children and our employees who were lost to us this year, and we've talked about them in recent times. We had a lunchroom worker who was a vital part of the learning community at Preston. We lost Big Al, who was a loyal fan. All of these people fit into this culture because of who they are, not of their title. And so I'm always concerned when we memorialize one child differently or one employee differently than another. So very thoughtfully and carefully, we have now constructed, and Michelle, thank you for your help in the investigation part. Any student who was an active student here and has lost their life, or any employee who was an active employee here and has lost their life, is going to be memorialized in a permanent memorial garden, a place to remember and reflect on our high school campus. Because what has happened is, I'm never happy with disparate messages that someone's child is more important or less important. We want to say that everybody deserves to be remembered, and every family needs a place to go and do that. And so we're going to be fast-tracking, the monument has been built, we're really working on the landscaping component part. But I just want to say to anybody that's watching, you know that we cleansed the rocks that were memorializing the deaths of, three tragic deaths in our community of kids. It was not in any way to be disrespectful to those three kids. The paint had been really worn off. As kids age out, they don't necessarily have a connection, and it seemed to me disrespectful to their memory to see a peeling paint rock memorialize someone's lost child. So all of those people will also join that wall of memory. But I try to always be consistent with the values that lead how we do things. This used to be Harrison High School, and what happened when they moved the high school to the new building is the kids painted the rocks on the outside of the building. The tradition was, in this high school, that you painted the rocks on the field at LMK. So over the last several years, because those memorials existed, the senior class, because they have golden hearts, moved their tradition to the back of the school, and now they paint the rocks in the back of the school. So what I'm saying to you is, I always try to honor tradition, but if tradition doesn't speak to treating everybody in the same way and honoring those lives, then we need to fix it. And so I know there are some people that are a little bit put off, but understand that it's not to forget anyone, it's to remember everyone as if they all matter in the same way, because in our hearts and minds, they do. In our district, our philosophy is very simple, it can be distilled to all means all. And so just, community, bear with us, we're going to open that soon, we're going to have a ceremony to honor all of those that have gone up on the wall. Michelle was here, and Brian was here, we used to, we were pretty old-school, we used to have an operator, a phone operator. We used to have an operator, a phone operator. Her name was Eleanor Minessida. She was a dear woman and she, what I wrote about her, I, I was reminded of the, the importance of connection. And Eleanor was the first person, because no matter what extension you called, you always got Eleanor. So she knew first who was having a baby, who had a tragedy in their life, so she was the phone tag lady. And Eleanor's name doesn't exist anywhere. And people like that need to be remembered. Guadalupe, who was a cafeteria worker who could tell Mr. Court right off the top of his head, who was having a bad day, lost her life to cancer. We need to have a space for all of those people to be seen and valued in the same way. And my, one of the, the most important employees I've ever seen here, Andy's seen every speech I've ever made, I remember saying, and getting, losing it a little bit, Dave Basso had the title of maintenance foreman. Dave Basso was so much more than a maintenance foreman. He was a person who grew up in this community. And when I first came here, frankly, a lot of people weren't friendly to me because I wanted to change things. Dave was one of the few people that was open. But Dave was a connector. Dave built a space for a young student, Jacob Sontag, who started his journey in Purchase School. He was so medically disabled, we had to literally build spaces in every school for Jacob to survive. And Dave built all of those things. And ironically, they died very close in time together. So Dave Basso needs to be remembered, Jacob Sontag needs to be remembered. And we have reached out to everybody and tried to collect a list to make sure that everybody is remembered. And we're going to keep reaching. Because remembering and respecting the contributions and the commitments of human beings to one another is what I want our district to be defined by. And so we're going to make this change. So stay with me. On a lighter note, our air conditioning is being installed everywhere, Tim, and we're going to have, hopefully, happy, cool people come springtime. And I want to thank Tim for staying on top of all of that work. It's been never-ending and the projects continue. And as, as you exit tonight, if you want to see the good work of our own maintenance crew, they've renovated the entire lobby here at LMK, a project that is near and dear to my heart. I've been traveling over to Parson School. They're still talking about the fact that we finally made that 1898 building handicapped accessible. Michelle Smiling, she knows a little bit about Parson School. We are continuing to work with Verizon to try to improve cell service at Purchase School, Harrison Avenue School, and the middle school. The cell service is dreadful and that creates a little bit of a challenge for us in an emergency because we want to let parents know, and if they're waiting outside, I can't send them a text message. So we are, Tim and I have been browbeating Verizon, and we've involved State Senator Shelley Mayer, who's also trying to help us get a resolution because it's become a safety issue. So I appreciate that help as well. I also want, while we're on the question of safety, I want to thank Brian for continuing his good work with HPD. They're continuing to do onsite visits to all of our sites. They're continuing to practice when your children are not around in the event of any kind of challenge. We continue to upgrade all of our systems. We've just implemented a new camera system, which will give greater access and flexibility in a real emergency to the county police as well as the local police department, which I think is vital. Because the one thing will never happen here, we won't suffer from a lack of practice. We're not going to be standing around in an emergency asking each other what to do. On that note, Mr. Freed will be rolling out another initiative. And this is a personal decision, but I'm always trying to add an extra layer of security for your children. So most middle school students, not all, have a cell phone. They're not supposed to use it during the day, same at the high school. But we want them to carry it with them because we are going to give them access to something called a Safe to Speak Up app. And all that really means is, God forbid, they were in an emergency or they were out on a field and they needed help. They will have an app on their phone. When they send a message, it will immediately go to every member of this school's safety team, as it does at the high school. It would go to Mr. Freed, Ms. Sepola, Mr. Specter, and a host of identified people, our SRO. I will see it, Dr. Ladwig will see it. So no child is ever alone or unable to communicate. And even if your child doesn't carry a phone, that's okay. They're going to benefit because most of their classmates would be able to assist. And we'll be sending you instructions on that. Parents are always welcome to download the app. It's available for parents as well. You won't have the ability to communicate with the administrator, but you will have a way to know in a real emergency. Mr. Mastroda did this just this week. We had a, a minor issue at the high school, but he used the CrisisGo app to let everybody know, it's just a CO2 alarm going off and everything's under control and everybody's safe. We don't use the CrisisGo app to tell you, stay home, it's snowing. That you'll hear from the lilting tones of Dr. Ladwig after I make the 4:00 AM decision. But I just want to let you know, we are moving expeditiously on every front. And I'm going to go one step further because it's the most, uh, important thing that I'd like to accomplish before I exit the organization, whenever that is. I want to build and finish the work that we started before COVID and we were so sadly interrupted. I'm building a multiple measure model for all of our students. We are now deep, deep, deep into the work of making sure that each child will be measured in at a minimum of three ways. Typical achievement, how do I do on a test? Growth over time, where did I start? How much did I grow? Not compared to anybody else, but the target for your child. And performance, what can I do with the things that I've learned? And I'm so excited with the work that the team is doing. Those are the things that actually make me really excited. All the other stuff is necessary to be able to do this work for kids. So very proud of what's going on. My team continues to inspire me because of their commitment to kids and work. And I say my team, I mean everybody. And, and I think everybody knows that. We have the best custodial staff every time, because somebody comes here, they tell me, who cleans your buildings? The people that work here. So that's all I have for you tonight. I hope that's enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
You are a wonderful storyteller.
Yeah, well.
You hold everyone's attention. Okay.
So from here.
Moving on to the personnel report. I will take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, extra compensation appointment. Two, leave of absence. Three, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Four, change of status. C, other. One, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, acceptance of gift from the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee. B, approval of CSE, CPSC minutes. C, approval of CSE, CPSC recommendations. D, approval of memorandum of agreement with the Harrison Association of Teachers. E, approval of memorandum of agreement with the Harrison Association of Teachers. Do I have a motion to approve, um, the administrative report? Second? Questions or comments? On behalf of the entire board, I would like to give, um, a very genuine thank you to the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee for their generous donation.
I do want to make a comment about one other thing. I, I'm always so grateful for the partnership we have from the Harrison Association of Teachers. From time to time, people go out on all kinds of leaves. Typically, it's to have a baby, which is always the wonderful kind of thing. But the, I think Dr. Ladwig would agree that Chris Tyler's cooperation with us in helping to fill those gaps and allowing teachers to support professional development beyond the school day is really a tremendous value add and it, it should be noted. So, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are removing item E from the agenda of the Finance and Facilities Report. So I will take on consent, the rest unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, Treasurers' Report, September 2022. B, Quarterly Report of the Extra Classroom Activity Funds. C, Approval of Option Agreement with ConEd Development. D, Authorization of Purchase Managed Print Services from Canon Solutions America. F, 2023-24 Budget Calendar. G, 2022-23 Appropriation Transfers. H, Termination of Contract, RFB Number 20/21-07 Tree Pruning Services. I, Approval of Ice Hockey Agreement. J, Authorization to Piggyback on Suffolk County Contract for BMS Computer Controlled Energy Management Services. K, Resolution to Appoint Volunteer Drivers. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report? Second? Questions or comments?
I, again, I would like to commend Tim. We just talked about the financial challenges the district, all districts are facing right now. And so every small contribution to being more efficient makes a difference. And Tim was very successful in getting us, uh, improved service and improved machinery to do our copying at a dramatically reduced cost. So credit to him for always looking on the margins because everything matters and it all cycles back to helping kids. So, thank you, Tim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that wraps it up. The next regularly scheduled business meeting will be November 16, 2022, um, here at the LM Klein Auditorium. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Do I have a motion to reopen the Wednesday, October 26, 2022, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is my fault, folks watching at home. I had such a large agenda tonight, I forgot probably the most important thing. So it is School Board Recognition Week. Actually, a week late, but we're still on time. And, uh, I want to remind the community that unlike other public servants, the school board serves for no fee other than a bottle of water. Uh, they devote their time and energy to the well-being of other people's children. I've said this many, many times, so it's not news to our public who watch on a regular basis, but I am blessed to work with seven people who are ethical in all things and never, ever, ever ask me to make a decision that isn't in the best interest of all children. And so I, I thank Michelle for covering me and, because she knows you like sweets, she bought you, I think, chocolate truffles that are supposed to be really good. We'll let you decide. But tonight would not be really complete without saying, on behalf of the entire community and certainly on behalf of the faculty and staff that work here, how much we appreciate the work you support us in doing on behalf of kids. We're proud of this district, but this doesn't happen if we don't have people like you sitting here. So just thank you so very much. And now you may adjourn the meeting if you so choose.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.